We're going to move this as the Vice Mayor suggested. We're going to have a presentation now from the US Border Patrol. Arrest and release policies in the Wilcox, Arizona.
Yeah, I'll introduce the Border Patrol Agent coming just to give everyone. Just to summarize how this all came to be. Border Patrol has always been great partners with the city of Wilcox. We have a Border Patrol station here in Wilcox. And we're grateful for them and what they do for our economy. As good partners, they made us aware of new policies that were coming down. And those policies involve undocumented immigrants. And they're, as soon as they would be arrested in the future, they would also be released. And I will turn the time over to Border Patrol Agent Alex Blais. Alex Blais, and he'll kind of summarize the new policy, how that's going to be unfolded. And then he's here to answer questions from the council and the community. So I'll turn the time over to him.
And so we don't get tied up here, y'all. Someone want to talk over somebody else? Would you please raise your hand and I'll recommend you.
I am going to. First off, thank you, Mayor Laws, council members. City Manager, Mr. City Manager. And most importantly, the people, citizens here. What I want to do is provide what you have asked for, and those are the facts. Regarding what we are entering right now. And in order to do that, I think giving you a short history. On what led to this point and where we are going and what we are anticipating is very important. So under the past administration. The implementation of migrant protection protocols was put in place. And I realize if I were just to listen to the news. Whichever news channel you listen to, it is very different the way that the information is made. But bottom line with the migrant protection protocols were. They were put in place to handle people who are claiming asylums in the US. Primarily family groups. So family members and family members with that, one of the key points is the child. And a child involved. So what happened under the past administration because of the influx of family units? Recall the caravans that were coming and that came to this country. In order to stop them from coming and basically being processed or released into the communities. Or the communities. They were sent to Mexico to wait for their asylum hearing. As many of you know, asylum hearings, there is a tremendous backlog. Not something Border Patrol has control over. I mean, our job is to control the border and to ensure border security. There are many different groups involved as far as asylum claims come or as far as they go. But our role is really that initial encounter to process those people in accordance with policy. More importantly, the law. So first off, you know, what I want to say is. I absolutely understand the concerns that several of you have made. And, you know, feel them as well. So with those migrant protection protocols that were in place. Basically, what we have is thousands of people that are currently waiting in Mexico for their asylum hearing. Many of those people decided not to stay and they go back to their country of origin. We're primarily talking about other than Mexican population. And those people are family groups. So when we're talking about the demographics of the population that we're looking at. At seeing. And it has already begun to happen in other places. That's the demographic of that population primarily other than Mexicans. And the breakdown in FY21, so starting in October. It's 3,751 people who were part of family groups. That have actually been released into the community. Okay, who claimed asylum and have already been released into the community. The breakdown of those folks is primarily families from Honduras. Followed by Guatemala and El Salvador. So when you're talking about that group that of those who are placed, it is primarily. 95 to 99% in that range are those from other countries and their families. So the current administration. Has suspended the migrant protection protocols or the, also referred to as the Remain in Mexico program. And that is what we are talking about right now. And they are now being released. And actually, there were a couple lawsuits that were filed by Attorney Generals. Or Attorneys General in both Arizona and Texas. That put a stay on the administration moving forward. But now that is about state plays. And what does that mean to the country first off? Southern border is what we're talking about. When those people are released, they are not being released from Arizona, first of all. So they don't have the infrastructure on the south side in Sonora. The people that are going to be immediate release are in El Paso, Rio Grande Valley, and in California. So, you know, that's the initial piece. However, we also know that then additional people will come, right? Everybody knows about it, so they will come. As soon as we receive word, and this is at the department level, but coming down to Tucson Sector. And of course, Wilcox, the station was part of Tucson Sector. We wanted to learn from the mistakes of the past and good practices of the past. And do what we could within the confines of the law, right? To ensure expedited release of those people. But also keeping in mind impacts on the community. So the big challenges that we have are really dependent on when those people are released. So it's basically a two-pronged equation. That two-pronged equation is it has to be in the government's interest. And it has to have a de minimis impact on whoever the person impacted is. So basically, when these aliens come to us and they make those asylum claims. And they are a family unit. And there are some other caveats there. Others do make asylum claims, but it is primarily, the vast majority are other than Mexican. Then, once that determination is made that they are going to be released on their own recognizance. That is done expeditiously, de minimis, meaning back to the person infected. And within the government interest. Okay, so that's kind of some of the jargon to separate that away, okay? So what do we expect will happen and what has our planning been here? At the point of that person being arrested or processed, that person. The plan in Tucson Sector is to do it at that location where that person was first encountered. We do not anticipate that happening here in Wilcox because we are well off the borders. We expect the impacts to be very similar to what happened back in 2017, 18, 19. Where those people are encountered at Douglas, Nakover, Cochise County. But the majority of those people were encountered coming across in the Nogales area, right? Because of the infrastructure on the south side. That's where the majority came from. However, the trend right now is really in other directions. Those things can change, but the infrastructure really does not exist on the south side in Arizona, okay? So the plan right now, okay, and it's always subject to change because it, you know, obviously we take our marching orders. But a lot of work has been done, a lot of planning has been done. Is at the point of apprehension, those people will be processed at the local station where they are caught. Okay, so that's where they'll be processed. We anticipate that happening across the southern border. Will we, is the potential there for us to get some? Under the current plan, yes, it is possible, but we're talking about a very small number. Because these are people primarily who are turning themselves in. They are walking across the border in order to find somebody to process their claim. So they have that paperwork. Once they're released, you know, they're basically staying until their first asylum hearing. So I want to stop there and entertain any questions that any of you have on that piece of it. And then I'll talk about the other piece that we have been talking with the city. And also the county sheriff and also the police.
Thank you for being here. Historically, what is the number that would, I mean, we have data. We keep numbers for everything. What would the impact be on Wilcox historically? Trends change, we know that, but historically. And who decides the impact? Is some being gathered, Washington decides how it impacts our local community? Or do we get to decide how it impacts our locals?
So what I can say, I'll answer the first part, or the second part first. What, who determines the impacts? What we are talking about right now. The city of Wilcox, the mayor, the people in the community, they determine the impacts. One of the things that we voiced right away when this happened is that Wilcox does not have the infrastructure. Infrastructure is funding to support the housing, the sheltering. They also, of these migrants, as well as they do not have. The transportation nodes basically to facilitate the public transportation. Or nonprofit transportation network to facilitate this. So as far as the impacts go, we're talking about the impacts right now and believing we have voiced that. I know Sheriff Danil says, has voiced that. And, you know, this is, it's basically a collective of those of us who live and work in this community. Is the one, are those who are voicing what those impacts are.
I understood what you said, that this is specifically policy change regarding those seeking asylum. And I'm curious, how big is that pool of those seeking asylum of the population that you encounter? Is this a small percentage of the big picture or is this the big picture?
So what happened, I can talk today, historic data. Traditionally, you know, through the decades, the vast majority, high percentage, and I can't, I can't get a quote right now. But the vast majority of those entering the country illegally were Mexican, okay? That shifted with some of these. The administration before last, some of the things that were put in place with family separation. And family separation policies to basically stop family separation. And unaccompanied minors coming in. That changed the dynamic through that period of time, basically from 2010 time period up until into the last administration. Where that somewhat flip flopped. And I would say, I'm just ballparking it here. So maybe in the 50/50 range or something like that, I can get that data. So that's what changed. And what we're talking about is hundreds of thousands of people. The impact, what we saw happen here previously was. The processing of those people was centralized. So anybody who was caught, they would go to Tucson and process them. Some of you may be familiar with some of the injunctions that were put in place. And basically, what those are was you can't hold on to juveniles or unaccompanied minors for a certain time period. You cannot separate families. And that really was a constraint on the agency. Which precipitated the release or the release on their own recognizance to that next hearing day. So there are a lot of challenges there. However, hopefully that answers your question.
Are these family groups, are they intact families? Are they croaking families? Are they teenagers bringing siblings? What is the demographics of the families? And are criminals who are previously unprocessed smart enough to seek asylum?
So that's. The family group, a child 17 or under with legal guardians, okay? And then anybody else involved in that family. Can it be a juvenile mother, father with another juvenile? Yes, still, you know, handled the same. So there are some slight differences there, but that's the first, the answer to your first question. On the second part of that question is criminal history, right? There are thresholds and where we are bound as an agency on criminal history. Often, it really depends on two things. Can these people be held until they are deported because of criminal history? And that has a, the one piece of that is, is there detention space? To hold on to those people in accordance with the laws that are governing it. Or court orders that are governing the amount of time they're kept in custody. The other piece is on the US Attorney's Office. They have to build in thresholds just based on the case mode as well for prosecuting these people. And you were absolutely correct, sir, when you mentioned that those who make those illegal entries, yes, that is a crime. However, those thresholds are in place basically due to funding capacity, number of US Attorneys, judges, and all of that. So in answering your question, those thresholds are put in place. And those are determined really outside of what the Border Patrol handles. You know, we can speak to some of that. You know, and as far as that goes, of course, we are looking at criminal records that we have. And those criminal records are from the United States.
That was my next question. Or are there criminal records? Do we know what's happening in Mexico that they have criminal records? And they come here, they don't have one.
Correct.
But they have one there.
Correct. And that is, that is, you know, one of the challenges that we have always had. And that has to do with the sharing of information with those other countries. And that is not something that is repeated enough.
Okay, I'd like to make an announcement.
Sure.
We have Mark Kelly's office. Ron Barber is actually online just now and listening for Mark Kelly's office, Senator. So I'll make that.
Very good. Wanted to follow up, okay, so for Wilcox, what is the current plan for that very? What we would anticipate being a very, a small number. Based on the constraints that I talked about. It is that we would process them. And at that point, once that processing is complete, we have to hold to that in the government interest and the minimus aspect. And the current plan would be to take them to the Texaco locally where the bus stop is. And we know that that is a challenge. What, meaning based on the numbers? The T A D across the street, right? And there are some local places that they can get food. Everybody is being released with a mask as well. I mean, for those of you who are concerned about that on the COVID side. And from that point. Is really incumbent upon that person to make arrangements to facilitate their further movement towards their final destination. So what, one of the reasons that we wanted to bring this to you. Fully understanding that there is not a network here. Or as far as we understand it, the information we've received. Is that, you know, those networks and that housing, those transportation services are not in place here. So what would we foresee? We would foresee more than likely people taking advantage of it. Meaning what is in the mutual benefit. Shuttles, Uber, taxis, waiting for the bus. And those type of things to transport those folks to a bigger city with greater infrastructure. Now, what we're talking about initially is a very small number. What I'm committed to and, you know, telling all of you right now. And, you know, obviously, we've had the conversations with Mayor's Office and locals is to be transparent. And let you know as things change. But that is the situation that we are seeing right now. Don't anticipate many, a large number of people. Those impacts, believe me, we have been voicing them repeatedly. That is really where we stand right now. And, you know, I will share those numbers on a daily basis when we are releasing people. Making sure that calls are provided to Mayor's Office, to the police chief. So, you know, that is kind of where we stand right now. I think this is an evolving process or an evolving situation. Where right now, the impacts that we foresee will not be to Wilcox. And that's what, that's what I can share with you.
Interesting is that when you release them, let's say it's from the Wilcox area. At what point do you wash the leg and swatch birds? When you just take them to the airport, they can ride with us and they have to figure it out to themselves? Or are they being monitored by our police department, Border Patrol?
So the short answer and fully understanding the potential here for calls to go to the hospital. Calls about loitering, petty theft. Or people who just can't support themselves and get from point A to point B. We have our limitations and what we can do is provide as much notice. And, you know, immediate notification when those folks are being released. But also continue to have these discussions about where we currently are and where we anticipate things going. So the short answer to your question is, we're not, I wouldn't, you know. Not going to make that gesture. But yes, once those people have been processed and have their, what we call a notice to appear for a pending. Hearing. They are released and we are basically bound and those people have a right to be in the US until that day.
So these people are being released? Are these people of? I think you said earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, these people are not criminal?
So, so the answer to that question is. Whether or not somebody with a criminal history is released. All depends on what the thresholds are. And that is with the US Attorney's Office. And also, it is also based on holding capacity.
And that goes back to what the mayor has said, that once they get here, they probably don't have a record, right?
The overwhelming majority do not have a criminal record that we know about.
So we really don't know what we feel and really.
I think that's true of any time you have a non-US citizen that is in the country. You know, you're also dependent even on the ones who are, receive visas legally. It's based on the information that is shared by the host.
I'll show you one other question.
So right now, if I understand correctly, the only thing we've discussed is those that have been waiting patiently. There's rules that were in place, but now those rules were changed. They can now come into our country and actually wave papers saying, hey, we have a right to be here. You set a court date and now you release them.
So we're actually talking about two populations. It is those people who have been waiting, okay? And now they will be processed, coming in and provided basically different paperwork saying, you know, no to appear. And then we are talking about that population of people who is coming based on the changes. So it's on the.
So those who have no papers, they've just come because they've now heard we have an open borders. And they can say, I seek an asylum. And then you start that process and you find out if they're have criminal records. And then they are in that same exact boat now, right? Is there no more returning them? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct. With that suspension of the MTP. The availability to return those people to Mexico to wait for their hearing has been stopped. Now, there is also another caveat here, and some of you may have heard it, Title 42. And basically, that's the authority that was implemented under the past administration. Due to COVID, it's for public safety. And what we have been doing since March, April of last year is returning. And it's not everybody, but it is almost everybody. Directly upon catching them, not bringing them in to process them in the station. And returning them directly to Mexico. So that is a, that is a different population, but, you know, we also, that remains in place. That remains in place. So that, that's a, you know, that's a positive to expedite the return of those people.
But that's only if they test positive?
No, that has nothing to do with testing. That has to do with basically.
Are you tested?
What's that?
Are you tested?
No, we do not test the migrant population. So.
Yes, I have two questions. I work with local law enforcement in your agency too, for what I do. But how long, when you guys arrest them and they get released and they have their court date, how long is that window?
I can't give you an accurate timeframe for what it is right now. But the approximated time from being released on their own recognizance. Until that initial hearing, it has been around two years.
So they're here for a number of years?
Yeah, and I don't want to speak to the percentages who show up to the first hearing. And then, you know, show up to the second hearing, but that is about, it's just a ballpark.
My next question is, I'm a truck driver. This has nothing to do with my company that it does with anybody. But as someone, I know the other drivers are asking me because I'm a manager. They get these vehicles in an accident, you know, no one will insure them, they don't have identification. What's the impact going to be if? You know, I understand, you know, I work with your guys in enforcement, I see for you guys. But what happens when?
Let me just first say, thank you because of the response time has been fantastic.
That's what I'm here for.
Absolutely, and, and just, you know, how efficient, appreciate it.
Well, I'm a one man, one man band out here. When I'm off, my other guys have to come and cover me. So, but what, what's, what are we gonna do as far as if people are selling vehicles and they get them? You know, what, what am I supposed to do with them?
Like with the vehicles?
Vehicles, I mean, if they get in an accident, damage other people's property, I mean, what's, who's gonna take care of that? Because if they have no insurance and they're here, no one's gonna insure someone who is not illegal to drive. I just wanna know, like, what, what are we dealing with as far as that goes?
Sure, and, and, you know, I, I can speak to the, the part of that, that uh, that, that we handle. Um and, you know, I, I think uh especially the sheriff or uh um uh the chief has, could speak to, you know, the other pieces of that. Um but basically when that happens, as far as the impact to you, we don't see any changes coming with that. Uh the population that we are talking about are the people who are turning themselves in, they're giving up. Um they want to be caught, so that other piece that.
But that's what I'm saying, the people who are being caught for asylum, if they're gonna be here for, you said, two years, how are they gonna get around? Are they gonna seek a job, get transportation on their own?
Uh, I, no, I understand. So basically, um, and hopefully this, this clarifies a little bit. Um I, I am, uh, I, I do not know of anybody uh who had, who had been caught within the last few years where Wilcox was their final destination. And most of these folks are, are, are going north and going into the interior. So upon their release, what they are trying to do, and when we catch them, we don't, we're, we, we're not processing people who were driving north and trying to evade. So if, if that really is a different population of people and we don't see a change to uh any of that uh to what you're speaking about. I mean, you, you raise very good questions. Um those types of things that have, happen after their release, uh those, those issues are handled by, by, by state and local authorities wherever that uh violation occurs.
Okay. Well, Donna, you have a question?
I think I can speak on behalf of Chad and Sissy Graves of the Texaco. We, I get bus tickets to San Antonio for people all the time. We have some inside joke if we get more food, we don't have to. But the bus is full many days. I'm gonna get a bus ticket for transient here and it's three days before they can get on that bus, it comes to here full. Well, has the, whoever's making these decisions, looked into that, that they talked to Brayhound, is that something we need to do?
So.
Because bus service, and then also if you don't get a three day ticket in advance, it's very expensive.
So um a- absolutely right. Um the other thing that we have to, you know, obviously talk about is whatever's happening in Wilcox is going to be happening to our right and our left, uh which means whatever the existing uh bus tickets that are receipts that are available, um knowing that the, the route is basically El Paso uh to and from Tucson with, you know, minimal uh stops here. That's why we, you know, I, what I had, had said um earlier, and I, I should have mentioned it, but knowing that transportation is going to be the greatest peak. Um, you know, there may be enterprising people um who uh take advantage of that. Um, yeah, you know, that's a possibility, um but that, that will be the need. Um most of these people, they, they have, they have contacts, uh we have to know, they have to provide us the information where they are going. Um, you know, in order to provide that, that follow-up notification that we don't send, but that, that's sent by uh citizenship and immigration services, C I S, uh when, for those hearings. So, having said that, you know, uh we, we fully understand that there may be a timeliness issue here. What we want to do though is make sure that we're communicating that and we're communicating that not only to you all, but also communicating that up uh through, through the department. And, and I think that um, you know, what I can say is the amount of attention that is being paid to this uh state, local, federal level um is uh, is very high and, you know, one of the reasons we're here. So hopefully that's, I, I, I know it doesn't provide an answer, but uh thank you.
They don't have a bus station like we used to down in California, like Cool, and there's only one bench at the Texaco and so, you know, we, I just see a whole.
And, and I agree with you, and one of the things that we will be doing is communicating with those people who are released and any information that we have in addition to, we would be more than happy to provide uh as far as numbers that could be called or what, what some of those options are.
Historically speaking and knowing human nature, uh the trends have been down due to multiple reasons, namely stricter immigration policies for the last four years. Uh knowing human nature, why does he keep those trends of asylum-seeking individuals, whether criminal or not, from flooding our southern border, knowing that their restrictions have been relaxed?
I, I, I think many um have the, you know, the same thoughts as you do, and I, I really, you know, it don't wanna, you know, provide opinions, but I think, uh, you know, obviously very astute to uh, to look at the potential implications. That's one of the things that we're doing.
Well, one of the most uh sinister things is unintended consequences. And I don't think these consequences are unintended from our elected officials, and I'm glad they're listening. Uh, I don't think they're unintended, but unforeseen consequences can have devastating effects. Uh I've lived in a rural town, and this is not a question, this is a state, is an observation. I've lived in small towns throughout the United States, or three states basically, southeast and here. Uh, people in positions of power could care less about what happens in Wilcox. It's our problem. Uh from landfills to power lines, I have been told when there was a kilowatt, seven point five kilowatt power line, I asked the engineer, I said, would you want this going to be your backyard? He said, no, we're not, but we will put it through yours. Uh, same thing with immigration. If we give them all the address of our elected leaders who made this decision, give them the address and let them, the bus tickets have their terminals as the places of the people who want them to come here. It may stop some of this.
And, and I could push that up as a proposal.
Um so, one of the things that I think about this conversation is that as you're bringing people in here um in small initially, but we all know plans change and estimates change and everything. Our community has, and I'm all for people coming here getting jobs, even if they're illegal, working. But our community, we already have people filling the low-end skill job, skill sets used to be filled by teenagers coming, just coming into the market. And those areas are already filled. What does the process look like for when we say uncle? We say we've had enough, we can't take anymore. What does that process look like? Because my, my opinion is that the only ones that listen to us are the NSA.
Under, I understood, and I, I, I caught it. Um, uh, so there's a piece of this that I can't answer. Um but what I can say is that this communication that we are having right now, I will make myself available uh to continue to, to speak to these things and work with the community, city leaders, uh the, the county leadership uh to make sure that these opinions and the implications and impacts of voice um with, and, and where, where I have limitation for the border control does is what we do uh policy-wise, and a lot of it, I, I will say from our, our chief in Tucson sector um uh all the way up to the, to the border control. They really do care, and, and, you know, no both of them personally, and I know sometimes it's, you know, it's, it's a figurehead. Um but the impacts of the community are, are absolutely realized, and, and I know that's true, uh, you know, to, to government issues as well. Can't, can't speak to the conversation personally that I've had with them, because I, because I haven't at this point, but I know there's regular communication uh with uh both uh our section leadership, uh as well as, you know, others in, in Cochise.
I guess my next question would be for the council yourselves is if you decide at some point you've had enough and you don't get any traction, what is the plan?
Ask it again.
Uh, at some point you've had enough, the citizens say, we can't handle any more of this, and you can't get any traction with border patrol or our elected officials, what is our plan to?
Oh, we're doing attraction. We've been on it for over a week now. You can see our representatives are here in Wilcox, Arizona. Uh I have direct contact with the governor and we, we do have traction. Um, don't worry about it. We're, 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 we live here too. And, you know, it's, it's a shame that we have something going on here. We're trying to figure it out. It's one of your old people. We're trying to figure out what the hell's happening. You can't just tell people that they have to take people in, you know, because I could say, well, you know, how many, Joe, are you gonna take in your house? I mean, am I gonna take in my house? I mean, it's two of them to take. I mean, that's not a question that we're gonna ask. I'm gonna say, we don't have the facilities, we don't have the soup kitchens, we don't have none of that stuff. But I will tell everybody in this room, we were in contact with the mayor's office in Tucson today, and they're pissed. I mean, they're, they're telling you, no, don't bring them here. So we're not alone. I'm not alone being down here in Wilcox, you know. These other cities are raising pain. I'm saying we do not have the facilities or the money to take all those people in. There's telling us that right now. So is that today? I wanna make one announcement, Joe, and I'll let you talk uh quickly. We have Con, uh, Joe Conrad, Mayor Vincent is on the line, but it's also rushing. Okay. Uh Rachel, you're next.
Okay, so I'm thinking that when you come in, um, at the station, you take the city property from there, the red property include cash that would be returned to them upon the release?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Uh, uh, both, both questions.
Because I think one of our biggest fears is that they're gonna come here and they're gonna, uh, what's the word? Because I don't even see it.
Sure.
I, I, no, I'm talking about, um, going to the grocery store and stealing and, you know, whatever those type of things.
And they're not being tested.
And that's another one of my questions, um, is that uh they may have the money to get themselves, I mean, they may have the funds to get a night or hotel if they can get a, so that is a possibility on the positive side. Okay? And uh you're not testing them, so how long have you had them here? How many have, have had them in here? And um do you have a quarantine period? Can you, if you would not be allowed, you know, I know families who just came here from the jail. Who live in it quarantine for um fourteen days, they'll be in quarantine for fourteen days. They tested them. Well, they went there, they tested them when they got to this state, they did some of the next city. And you guys are doing testing and just putting them out to us and letting us deal with it?
So it, it, it's a good question, and, and the answer, the short answer is uh, no, we, we are not testing. So um basically um what, what happens first off, if somebody makes a claim um or they are um observed to be symptomatic, uh everybody that, that comes to us uh is um, uh undergoes an intake and a medical review process, a screening. Um and if anything happens during that screening requiring hospitalization, um of minor, I shouldn't say hospitalization, a going to a uh, a healthcare provider, they are taken to that healthcare provider uh until they are deemed fit for release.
Who pays for it?
What's that? That, that's the, the, the federal government pays for uh the screening fees, but no, you're absolutely right. We, we know that uh local communities um have, have borne the brunt uh of some of those medical um bills, uh obviously. And I can't speak to all the, the funding involved, you know, sort of grants and, and things like that, or how much of the federal money is, is tied to that. Not really my, uh, my area of, uh.
CFO for hospitals, you're most, are you prepared for?
I can speak to that if, if the border patrol brings uh, uh an immigrant to the facility. We do, the federal government does pay a, 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 for that, for that chair. If however, they're released and then they seek care, there is no reimbursement for that. There is a, a bit of a caveat right now for COVID, that if it's a COVID-related treatment, there is the potential for some reimbursement, but I think, you know, we don't know about, we've been another month, another six months. But if it's not a COVID-related treatment, let's say they come in with a heart attack, there is no reimbursement for that.
Thank you.
There is, um, one more question. There is, um, I have a back sheet that says that the bill provides for new funding to state and local governments, private organizations, educational institutions, community-based organizations and non-for-profit organizations to expand programs to promote innovation and inclusion, increase English language and providing assistance for those who are wanting to become citizens. So follow up to that, do they need a sponsor to become a citizen?
So um on, on the citizenship question, I, I really need to limit what I'm discussing uh to what, what is within our purview. So anything that happens within the legalization process or um the, the green card process uh getting uh temporary residency uh really outside of, of uh our, our purview.
Okay, and the other thing I have is the bill allows undocumented individuals to apply for temporary legal status with the ability to apply for green card after five years if they pass criminal and national security background checks and gain their taxes. How are they gonna pay their taxes? If, are they like caught, like stuck in the middle or what?
Uh, yeah, ob- obviously uh each situation is gonna be different um uh in, in, you know, based on uh what you're saying. I, I, I can't answer the, the hypothetical, and but, you know, I.
The conversations I've had with the state now, I feel like, uh, start with until anybody goes and has their first court date. And we don't know how long that will be. No one can actually guarantee how long that court date is. You cannot offer them a job. Against the law, offer them a job. So what are they gonna do?
So, you know, I, I think that all of you are asking the questions that um those of us who have worked uh, you know, in this field, for me, it's uh over twenty years, and, you know, speak to, to the same for uh my deputy. Uh many of these same questions, you know, are asked of, of those who work here and the uh, the, the immigration laws that are, are current and some things that, that may appear to be uh contradictory. Um, you know, really, really can't speak to it, but I, I absolutely understand the question and the, the dilemma for both U S citizens and for uh minor population.
One last one. What kind of ethnicities are we speaking about? We're not just talking mixed.
No, but we're not. The, the, the vast majority um are what we consider uh northern tribal countries, um Guatemalans, Hondurans, El Salvadorans. Um that is what uh historically we have, we have seen.
I, just to hammer that point, so what I hear you talking about are family units who have reached the border, who have turned themselves in, who have met some minimum threshold to be given a hearing, who happened to be processed in Wilcox. So what I hear you talking about is actually a, a pretty, I mean, that's, that's a lot of.
And, 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 and that's what I, you know, wanted to convey and want to leave you with is that based on the plans in place now and, and the forecast uh as, as, that they currently stain, um that we do not see a large impact to Wilcox, okay? The, the caveat. The caveat there is that, been in this, in this line of work for many years, and, you know, not trying to patronize any of you, you know how policies change, laws change, and things like that. I can speak to the here and now.
Joe.
Sorry, you said Joe, I got him, you said Joe.
Mr. Mayor, you answered one of my questions. That once you release them and you started that initial paperwork, so they have asked for asylum, they cannot be employed any way, shape, or form legally until after that first hearing, which could be six months. Probably not less than six months, up to two years. So they, anybody that puts them to work in any way, shape, or form is breaking the law, correct?
Yes, and what, I, I wouldn't envision that happening to any extent in Wilcox. And, no, no, I understand, I'm just talking in general, not just Wilcox. No, no, yes, sir.
But no matter where they go, how are they going to become self-sufficient in that three years?
And I, I do not have an answer to that.
Legally, they can, is that correct?
That, that is correct unless there is some sort of relief provided to them.
Or something like that.
Correct, unless, yes, exactly.
My question, Mayor Laws, is some of the others have mentioned it, you know, about the criminal record. So they don't have a criminal record here, and if we don't know they had a criminal record in Mexico, what's our recourse as private citizens? You know, they break into our house, break into our car. And I understand what you're saying, that it's family groups? Families commit crimes, families, and not just individuals. You can get your kids to shop with, if you tell them to, they'll do what mom and dad say. What are we supposed to do if they're, again, breaking into our homes, our cars? I'm not expecting it to happen, but it's a possibility.
And, you know, I absolutely don't want to...
First thing in Wilcox would be our chief of police, Claudia, and our sheriff, our dangerous, that's their job, doesn't matter where they're from, if they commit a crime, these gentlemen will do it.
Now, you have a follow-up question, which I haven't checked on this policy. I know castle law used to be a thing in Arizona where someone breaks into my house in the middle of the night and I shoot them. Okay, well, they were invading my private property. Does that still apply?
Yes, it does.
Not that I plan to shoot anyone, that's all.
That law is in place.
Thank you.
Stand your ground.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I think, I had read a letter, I think the council's working on getting funding from the federal government. So, so my question is, and I'm just, I'm listening to all this stuff, so let's say I'm, I'm an immigrant, I come to the US, I claim asylum, I meet all the criteria, and I process, I move, I serve my own practices, right? And you guys are like, "We take you to the Texaco, but it's going to take me three days to get a ticket to get to wherever I need to go." What, what is, what's available to us, those of us who work in the city or help in the city, like Ladona and other people, like that, whatever, because I didn't quite understand what it is the council seeking from the federal government, but is there going to be like funding for our shelter for a few nights? Or food? I mean, because there's basic human needs, you know, children...
Right now, but basically every downtown city, I think, the chief of police and sheriff, they have already things in place that were not meant for immigrants. You know, voucher for buses and things, but we actually have a city, and there's funding by the good people of Wilcox, and a lot of them are donated.
So if by chance we have to buy...
We sure could have a hundred thousand. We sure could have a hundred thousand.
Well, so what is small to you? You keep saying a small number, is that two to three, is that 50? Like, what is small to you?
So, small to me, with, you know, right now, based on the data, a family group may come to us and I don't want to predict for too much, but one, one, a family group a week potentially. I mean, that's what we would see right now, and that would be at the high end. I, I can only base it on what, what we currently receive here. The, the challenge really on, to, to Wilcox is if there is a change to what all of our plans are right now. And that, there are a lot of factors involved, the capacity levels in other places where they cannot process those people, but these are all the things that we're planning for. Title 42 that I mentioned, right? Additional policies or laws, injunctions, things like that coming down. So as it stands now, that, that is what I can give you, that's just a, a guess. Yes, possibly.
I just wasn't curious.
As, as the current, I, I'm fighting my tongue to say that because...
It's all relative, so what's small to you versus what's small to them?
So if we, if we go back to what our capacity was during the, the last time this happened, the maximum under what used to be done before, if we start receiving them from other places, we would be looking at a maximum of 30 a day. We, that is not where we are right now, that is... Right. Exactly. And we know that that would have serious impacts, and those are the things that we are getting ahead of collectively.
I have a question.
So my one, just one final thing. So let's say I come, because we have, we have been involved in helping people get to Tucson or get to places that they need. So in the past, we will call the police department and they give them a voucher, or we take them. So are we supposed to do the same with these folks if they're released here and we come across one? Do we call the PD and say, "Hey, ask someone to use a hotel voucher"?
I believe the PD would be one of your first places to call, but not meaning they're going to help. But they may direct you somewhere to help, because this is a government issue, and we don't have the money for it. So we would actually, I'm sure Dale's got something in place, and the sheriff's got something in place.
So we would just call, we like figure what's going on and see if you guys can help?
Because they're actually all on board on this, and we've had numerous conversations with them, we've had numerous conversations with the sheriff. And then there's things in place, but a lot of things have changed, y'all. And, and by talking to our higher up electives, in fact, some of the new ones on the immigrant side, they don't have a clue what they're doing. And we've asked them, and they're like, "You know, we're going to go to Congress and we're going to try to figure it out." You know, and that's good, there's no figured out.
Just to feed off of what she said, so Mr. Blaze, this same policy was in effect under President... What, what happened was, yes, the answer is yes. Well, I just say that, so that's the data you're... That is what we are reporting. So like, it's not like we've never experienced this before. It's similar in that we're... What we haven't done is, is, is the, uh, the protocols that we are planning to put in place, and that is those, those groups being released at the place where they are apprehended or they turn themselves in. That's the difference, because before, everybody was going to Tucson and they got overloaded, and there were, there were challenges on the capacity issue and the family separation issue and those. So, I have a question, but I got to the short end.
The term keeps getting used that they're undocumented family immigrants seeking asylum. Bottom line, they're illegals. I'm a citizen of this country. If I do something illegal or break the law, there's consequences. Why is there none here?
And to answer your question, I, I don't have it. But what I can tell you is, I, I know what the laws are, and I also know what policies are when, you know, historically, where exceptions, for lack, lack of a better word, are made. And a lot of that, almost all of that has to do with funding. And there's a political side of this that I think I understand pretty well, but, you know, really not positioned to talk about it.
Wait a minute, Carl? I'm sorry, I'm lying here. I just wanted to clarify what you said earlier about the 30 being released here. What you're saying is if, if the other stations in your sector are overwhelmed, they're going to send some over here, and you only have the ability to process 30 a day? Is that what you're saying? So will they be released here, or will they be taken back to where they were?
And all, all I was trying to convey was the amount of people that we have the capacity to process before that would fit into this category, right, that would then go back to Tucson for their release. That's what, what we are talking about. Because that takes quite some time to process these types of aliens. So we can process a lot more of, you know, the different type, yeah.
But you are just going to let them off on their own, we'll understand once you're done.
So what, what we would be doing is, so they aren't roaming the streets of Wilcox and trying to get the 2.6 miles to, you know, from the station to the Texaco, would be releasing them at the Texaco. You know, that, that can be changed, you know, that is just where that the bus stop is. But, you know, if it is a, a parking lot, if it is the TA, you know, understanding wherever they are released, whoever that business owner is who is closest is not going to appreciate that, we would assume. So there's, you know, some flex, there's flexibility with that, and of course, you know, we can, we can speak more on that. You know, definitely want to continue working with that.
Yeah, we need a lot more conversation.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Mike? Oh, Joe, I'm sorry, Joe.
I have just one question. Has the federal government also had you stop the checkpoints in the state of Arizona?
The answer to that is no. And, and many of you know that the checkpoints since right around Christmas time have been closed, the three that, that, that we own and work. That has to do with sending a good pool of our agents the flexibility to provide them where the majority of the crossmen have been. Basically, to reinforce that, we are expecting them to come back. But it, it, you know, all of that is, is based on flows, and, you know, we, we need to be flexible and dynamic with, with our television staff.
I got two questions. The first one, I don't really expect an answer to. But we keep asking the federal government, "Pay for everything." Where does the federal government get their money from?
I think I know the answer to that rhetorical question, sir.
Okay, so if they keep, if their expenditures go up, that means my loose change goes down. And I got a problem with that. The second problem is, you keep talking about a transient population, that they won't be in work hours all. Does anyone have any estimates on the amount of damage that a transient population can do in a short amount of time?
Do I have an answer to that question? I, I don't have that estimate. But no, sir, I, I understand the concerns.
A lot of this, Luther, you're, it's, it's enlightening people that's not thinking about some of these things. You're not going to get an answer to them, but it sure does get out there and people start having discussions, and we'll have further discussions.
So I have a question. Talking about these families and kids not being separated, all this, what's, how do you know for sure that it is their kids? Whether DNA testing done, is it just, because we know that the child trafficking is rampant, and I can't go into detail, but we know way too much about them with some new traffic. So, so how do you know? Or are they just...
So, so DNA testing is being done right now. However, are we getting the returns on that? No, but this is a process that has been implemented, and we are starting. Basically, that is through my agents interviewing the people, checking documents on those people, as well as making phone calls to points of contact. So if, if we believe that those people are not family members, not legitimate, that, that process separates. Now they are no longer, if that determination is made, they are no longer considered a family unit, and now we're talking about two different things. That child then will not be released in, in Wilcox or anywhere that matters. And those immigrants are not part of that same population.
I'd like to show you something.
And there are caveats to all of these.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Secondly, is just that when they are released, then they go to the destination? I didn't realize that they have destinations sometimes to go to. Okay, but then it's a two-hour, I mean, a two-year wait and maybe for processing. What do you think the percentage is of being able to locate those people in two years? They can't get a job, so they can't buy a house, they can't work. So I don't, what's the percentage that you're going to find them, do you think?
So with, with, the, the short answer to that question is that, that data, you know, whatever search engine you use, is readily available, and the percentage is high for the appearance at that first immigration. What about the second? Yes, yes, sir. I, I believe that is much clearer.
So if they don't show, if they show up at the first, if they don't show up at the second, does that put them in the other category, and now you need to go back?
The answer, I can speak to, I can speak to the, the general information, the answer is that it's really outside of our purview, but the answer is, is yes. So if, if somebody does not show up to hearings, then an immigration judge can determine that they are basically deported in detention with what they're called for.
Who do I deport them though? Are you going to send out a warrant to the police or the sheriff?
So that, that then, I mean, this is going into another, another realm completely, but, you know, that's incumbent upon Immigration and Customs Enforcement or ICE.
In other words, then, you're just going to be here perhaps the rest of their lives as an illegal that's working, getting paid under the paper.
I, I, I understand that the dynamics can't, can't answer it. Understand it, sir.
Alex, I'd like to, we're going to have to move on a little bit, y'all, and we can have these discussions seriously. Gail, would you like, would you dig the floor for anything? Would you like to say something? You, you've traveled a long ways today to be here. This is Gail Griffin, our representative.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is that they have no money. They have no food. They have no medical history. No background check. Do they have IDs?
So the, the vast majority do have IDs, the vast majority.
What kind of IDs?
They are cedulas or the, the state-issued IDs of their country. And many do have money with them, they, they do have funds. And, you know, they, they're not all indigent at the point that we apprehend them. But I, I can't speak to percentages, but I can speak to what we have. We, we process these, this population on a daily basis, and the vast majority do have money.
Interesting. The IDs, I'm concerned about, are they, how to prove they are who their ID is? I understand there was a wild backpack, backpacks full of consulate carts were found. I don't know if that's still occurring, but I'm, I'm pleased about the DNA being done. Drugs, human smuggling, I guess that's the sheriff and the, and the police's job.
Well, on, on the initial screening too, on any, any indications of human smuggling, you know, that is addressed at that, at that, that point in time. So, but understand absolutely those concerns.
I do, I did give the mayor and council a letter from the governor on this particular issue, and the... And I just like to real quick read a statement from the attorney general's office. Two weeks ago, the attorney general sued the Department of Homeland Security over its decision to delay deportations for a hundred days. DHS decision will cause the government's holding facilities to quickly fill up in result in the release of illegal aliens, some of whom have criminal records and places significant burden on the Arizona law enforcement, housing, education, employment, commerce, and healthcare needs and budgets. The federal lawsuit is in the District Court of Arizona is moving forward. Attorney general continues to monitor any new changes to immigration policy that the Biden administration may take and will continue to act in the interest of Arizona's. So the governor is concerned as we are, who's coming in the country? We don't know who they are. And I know prayer blankets have been banned in the past as well. So we need to know who's here. We need to know about their medical history. We need to know what's coming in. And so the state is very much concerned. I want to thank you for being here. We, I do have a resolution that's going through the legislature, thanking the border patrol for your work and what you're doing. You're only getting orders from above. And so we want to thank you for your work and consideration and love. Except they're not coming to Wilcox. They're coming to service. They're coming to Tucson.
Well, we appreciate that. And what I don't want anybody to walk away with is that we are not in certain parts of the community where many of our agents live and all of our agents work. And for you all too. So it's very important for us, and this has been extremely beneficial for me, because I need to continue to communicate the anticipated impacts with changes to, you know, our current course of action as well as if the current course of action, you know, deviates based on a different demographic or different circumstances, then we'll prepare.
Thank you, Gail, for showing up. I appreciate it. I want to hear representative from the state, Gail Griffin. And you are here, and we appreciate that. And you need to understand that we do have people that care about you. They're here. Your elected officials are here. And we made some phone calls and asked them to come and they, like you got out of legislation day like two o'clock and then raced right down here to be here about five thirty. So we appreciate that. Alex, I'd like to ask the CFO for, CEO of the hospital, Mo, you got anything to say that might interest us?
Nothing further than what I've already mentioned. It's certainly a reimbursement concern and share the concerns that are mentioned and appreciate the humanity also, the compassion that's shown. It's a double edged coin, unfortunately. And but as far as hospitals concerned, if the hospital is in a very precarious financial situation, and it is certainly a concern if we see patients that we expend our resources on and don't receive any reimbursement support.
If we could do anything for you, would it be, am I understanding you, that we could use our sources possibly to get you more funding?
That is always appreciated.
Well, this may be, this may be the time. And I'm just saying Caleb, our city manager, real good at it. And Dale's good at it. I'm sure the sheriffs get at it. And I know Tim's known some of it. And so it's like, you know, if we can help you, let us know.
Thank you.
Give us a word in what you.
You know, we are under, under federal law, we are required to see those who present to the emergency room and want to take care of sick people, right? That's our mission is to take care of the communities that we serve and want to take care of people who are sick. We are not without compassion and, but we are without a lot of resources. And so anytime we can receive assistance to pay for those patients who don't have resources, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Sheriff Daniels, would you like to have the floor for a minute or two? I know you've got to get all the way back to Sierra Vista, but that doesn't usually bother you that.
No, it doesn't.
To stay up late.
Mr. Mayor Council, thanks for having us. And Alex, thank you, nice presentation. And thank you all for coming out. Hopefully everybody can hear me. You know, the reason we're having this meeting tonight, and I'll just say this, is the confusion that's been placed on our citizens in this country based on the lack of clarification from Washington DC. And I'm going to be very blunt on some of the things I've said. I spent the last three weeks trying to deal with these issues. And some don't know a lot about me. I'm the president of Arizona Sheriff Association right now. I'm chairman for the National Sheriff Association for Border Security, and I'm appointed as the homeland security as a member of DHS. So I have a lot of hands into what goes on when it comes to security on our borders and what we address. I just got to say, when this executive order was signed, the first thing I asked was why so hasty? Why so hasty on this? And where we've been over the last four years? And I'll just say this, I'm sure I don't forget to say it, put disclaimer on there, the council, mayor, to you all, politics has no business in policing. I'm sure my agents will agree with me. I know the chief will agree with me, and hopefully you will too. We go out and force the law as part of the executive branch because that's what the wishes of the people. So when I saw the hasty decision to rescind the emergency clause on the southwest border, which stopped the construction, funding, and resources, I thought, wow, how about talking to us? And just to give you a little history, I was on the Biden transition team, there were four sheriffs that were selected by national sheriffs to be on that. We spoke about what's going on in Cochise County on our southwest border, our collective and collaborative, collaborative efforts with our federal partners, which is awesome. I'll just say you got one of the best packs here in Wilcox. Alex, I mean that when I say that, we work very well with you. And about thirteen other partners that work with the sheriff's office on border security. In the back of the room, I have Sergeant Tim Williams, who runs my border team, two of my ranch deputies, Jake Carshner and Jesse Mitchell, and Sergeant Trey Reed from the New Mexico State Police is here with you tonight too. Just to introduce him, is we work with a lot of partners to help secure your communities. We're not the experts. Sheriffs have three objectives on the southwest border, national sheriffs, when it comes to border. Border security equals community safety, which is public safety, national security, and the last is humanitarian, which has been discussed here tonight. We agree with you on all three of them. Sheriffs and police chiefs are experts of communities. Our federal partners are experts of national security and border security. Collectively, it's a recipe of success. And that's something we push very hard at the federal level. Every decision that I sit in, when I'm sitting in DC at the DHS meetings or testify in front of Congress, it's always about if decisions are being made in Washington DC, how's it positively affect our communities? And if it doesn't, you need to rescind or rethink about what you're doing. I push that really hard. I think it's important to have that community voice. I was the first sheriff to be put on that committee, which tells you right there, is community the first thing in mind or is it national? A lot of people sit on that homeland security are people that are federal judges, the CEO of Southwest Airlines is on that, Gary, all these people are awesome what they do, but they be touching community like sheriffs do or police chiefs. No, they don't. The only other community rep was the police chief out of Houston. And so when all these changes started happening, the first question again is why? Why the hasty decision to make this? I immediately reached out to our governor. I've reached out to the mayors. We've talked, mayor, your mayor and I have talked, other mayors have talked, I've talked to the police chiefs, we got a brief from border patrol here with all the police chiefs, myself, our county attorney, and figuring out why are we in this position? What happened here? And I'm telling you, it's frustrating. Think about Title forty-two was brought up by Alex. I actually wrote a letter on behalf of National Sheriff Association to the White House to include the former secretary Wolf saying, we need file two, Title forty-two on our border, which is a health emergency, to restrict only essential, strict travel unless it's essential. That's still in effect. Folks, here's what I'm going to tell you right now, is we're in a health pandemic. Rural counties have suffered. We all know that we don't have the resources. The CFO, I think it was CFO, the hospital, she understands that when it comes to bed space, all the things that were limited in rural America. This health pandemic is still in place. And what amazes me is now we're going into another country and releasing the NPP program. Let me tell you why we have the NPP program and refresh on that. In 2019, when we had the surge, and which scares me, and I said last night to DHS leadership on a conference call, and let me just say, Alex, thank you for your, just being upfront. I was told last night was for the sheriffs on a conference call, that this is the first dialogue we've had besides telling us the night before they announced the NPP, that they read a statement to us, they called, said, Sheriff, you'll be on a call in eight minutes. I jumped on the call. He said, they read the statement, said, we don't want to take any questions from anybody. There's only a handful of us on there. Don't say anything, we're announcing tomorrow morning six. That's how I became aware of this NPP. The, so last night, we threw a fit on that because of the health pandemic that we're in. They are not COVID testing, which should be a concern to everybody. Should be a serious concern. It's the marketing and the message that's being sent out that bothers me too. And I said this last night. Number one, the hastiness, and number two is the fact that is, if you want a collaborative effort, you want to share a mission and a message, you got to bring this to the table. There's a statement, there's an email out right now from the secretary that says that they're going to do this. Cost is not a factor. And isn't, and there's, they got a committee, a steering committee to get this done. Alex, I don't know if you've even seen this. You probably have. But there's no local health departments on it, there's no emergency service coordinators on it, there's no sheriffs on it, there's no police chiefs on it. Local is the byproduct of this. I brought this up last night. And what they told me last night was, and the other sheriffs, so the sheriff out of Texas says, we are not going to tell sheriffs or police chief, who's coming into your community? We're almost like the bad guys. And our responsibility is, I don't work for Washington DC, I don't work for the government, I work for you all people in this room. And, and I tell you, it's upsetting as heck. I was very upset last night because I pulled, I was coming back from Phoenix, pulled off and did this conference call. And you can tell what didn't go well. But because I'm your voice when it comes to the local public safety, along with your police chief and your respective city here. And when I, you have this kind of disrespect. I sent a letter to your two US senators in this state, and I know Ron Barber's on this, and Ron's a friend of mine, but I tell you, I never even heard back from Senator Kelly. We got an email back, Senator, Senator Sinema's staff sent a thing to Sheriff Wilmot of Yuma, he sent one too. And I sent on behalf of the Arizona sheriffs. And then I sent an email back to the guy that sent the email to Sheriff Wilmot. That was on February ninth, I haven't heard, it's been crickets. It's been crickets. Folks, I'm telling you, you made a comment Luther about this, get your elected leader, state, local, and federal engaged. If they're not engaging, they're not there. We share one common thing under oath of office, whether you're a judge, whether you're a mayor, council, whether you're sheriff, is to protect Americans. And it's bothersome where we're at, where we're at with this whole thing. So when it comes to public safety, that's a concern. Alex, those weren't talking about that. And I'll just tell you, in Cochise County over last since 2017, thanks to the team back here, thanks to the, our sergeant from New Mexico State Police, thanks to our agents over here, our governor, thanks to Gail Griffin. We have done an amazing job of making this the safest county on the southwest border of thirty-one. We have a hundred percent conviction rate on smugglings. We get referrals from border patrol, we take them, we prosecute them at a local dollar, there's no reimbursement, but we do it in a way that we know is the best and right thing to do. Hundred percent conviction rate. Brian McIntyre could be here, county attorney, I couldn't bring that up. We have a stockpile of a thousand local cameras, we got deployed six to seven at one time. And as we speak in this room, there's twenty-five illegals coming right over here by the Cherokee House, coming toward Wilcox. This seems modern, I know you guys are too. We're watching that off the sheriff's camera system. And I'll tell you something, when I see things like this happen, it's bothersome to me, it's truly bothersome to me. Because in politics seems to be inserted in this, it has no business in it. These guys got a tough enough job, my local law enforcement has a tough enough job, and to see this. You had valid questions tonight, valid questions. And some of the things that I, and Alex, correct me if I'm wrong on this, I found this out today, there's a, I know you said two years, two years to just get him in front of a judge. Six years to come through a complete process of it. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. It's six years, there's six years backlog on this. Try to find these people after six years. I'm not being ill with that. And I respect this. When, and Yuma sheriff and I are very close, we're working, the mayor over there was working with us. They're releasing them, and think about this for a minute. CDC's got the guidelines for travel. But you're, they took twenty to the Yuma airport and dropped them off now with a penny to their name and said, hey, good luck. They wandered the streets of Yuma. You saw the articles from the Yuma mayor in Yuma City. Folks, I'm telling you right now, there's got to be a better and more humanitarian way to enhance this process, enhance this program. Because what they're doing now is hasty, it's political, and it's wrong. And that's my opinion, and it's also my professional opinion. And you can't blame these guys sitting over here in the green. You can only admit the people that signed those things, but until they reengage, one thing we had going on with us, and I've been down thirty-seven years, I've been a cop, and I'm telling you, seeing the ebb and flow, the roller coaster of politics is upsetting, and it should be upsetting to you too. And here's the last thing I'll say to you is, as we just turned the light on, as Tom Bonnet says, come, we'll get the light on. We just did that again. This is a slippery slope for what's going to be happening in the future. And we've seen this, 2019. Let me share some stats with you that Alex will appreciate this. These are, and these stats came from VHS, sitting on that committee, these are not a private unclass, or classified thing. And by the way, I read what I said to Senator Sinema's rep, staff member. My name is Mark Daniel, sheriff of Cochise County and current president of the Arizona Sheriff's Association. Sheriff Wilmot, who's a Yuma sheriff, and I truly appreciate your email on behalf of our Arizona sheriffs. That's the letters that we send. We look forward to discussing current issues as well as seek best practices for communities and state. I will be your point of contact and look forward to working with you, the senators, on certain discussions versus sheriffs. Crickets, I've heard nothing. That was on February ninth. But I want to share these stats with you. I know Ron's on this, I hope Ron will take this message back. If he doesn't, then well, we'll keep doing what we're going to do. I'm not being rude, I'm not trying to be rude, but I am being blunt. I mean, it's like anybody, if I show you respect, you'll show me respect back. If I don't, I'll probably get that kind of treatment. But I want to show you these stats. You know, we've talked about what happened in 2019, which is what was seeded for the NPP program. That's really what kind of pumped this, these caravans, these surges, that really worked. It truly did work. And that's what gets me, is effective. Is there something better? Let's talk about it and get the best answer and get engaged by mayors, council, sheriffs, police chiefs, people like that. But in 2019, the first nine months on the southwest border, there's a question about the children. In Yuma sector alone, there were thirty-five hundred children that were carted, exploited, which means they were put in with the adults, they come across, they expedite them because they had children, and off they went because they were a family unit. Alex, tell me if I'm wrong, please step in, correct me if I'm wrong. They investigated that in a six month investigation, thirty-five hundred kids were rescued from the cartels, from their exploitation, and a whole load of adults were arrested on this too. But they exploited those kids for the benefit of the cartel. You don't see that in the news, folks. Three hundred thousand hours of medical time was spent by these guys in the green right over here, helping on the humanitarian side. That's a lot of time during that caravan and surge. They should be concerned if this stuff, if this continues under the slippery slope. Hundred and forty-one different countries breached our southwest border in the first nine months. Eleven hundred gang members from twenty different countries hit our southwest border. Folks, when I say public safety, that's what I stand here in front of you today with. Eight hundred and twenty-two assaults just on federal agents alone. Sixty-one hundred fraud families were identified in the southwest border in the first nine Two hundred thousand ICE community releases were done because they were overcapacitated. And, and I can go on that, but I'll stop. What I'm trying to say to you is, if we don't attack this on the front end, the back end's going to be hard to see the front end after a short amount of time. Now, just in the first nine months. What that current administration, past administration did was slow that down, give them some breath. They took a beating on that, they were not prepared for that. I think Alex, I'm right when I say that? Who would be? Who would be? Two hundred and eighty-one deaths on the first nine months, which sheriff's offices had to investigate every death. We have to take a team out there with these guys and investigate every death out there. If that's not humanitarian, that's worse. And the only one smiling when the executive orders were signed is the cartels. They're the only ones looking, wow, thank you. Because they know, they know. Cochise County's been off limits to the cartels in a lot of ways, but to give you an example, show where the political side of this comes in there, we ran what, four or five hundred over the last couple of years per month, that we see off our cameras. In August, we went to twelve hundred. In the month of December, we had over twenty-five hundred illegals on our cameras alone. That's, my cameras not even including what the border patrol sees. I'm just saying to you, this is good to have this meeting tonight, it's productive, it should be packed in here though. It should be truly packed in here. I commend you, mayor and the council, for taking a proactive stance. As your sheriff, I'll continue to do that, I'll continue to be loud. I've done more interviews this week than I've done in a year, and I'll continue to do that. The fact is, if we don't bring educational awareness and the facts to play, and the awareness and the facts to play, and if every elected leader, local, state, and federal is not working together on this, I don't care about the politics. If it's not working together on this, shame on this. But I can promise you one thing, in Cochise County, this unit, our partnerships with Border Patrol, I helped the governor, a lot of stats and a lot of that letter, mass came through, Dargan Williams working with them, and myself with the governor, to ask for their support, along with your attorney general. And Gil Griffin's been a, a key to a lot of things we do, and Dave Gowan and Becky Nutt. So again, you've got a unified front in this county, I can almost promise you that. But I'm telling you, our US senators in Arizona need to step up. I know the mayor had talked with them today, but I'm telling you right now, they should have staff members on this call. I know, uh, Ron Barber, who I've known for a long time, but they gotta get engaged. Uh, when they say, I don't know what's going on, then that's a slap in their face too. They need to find out what's going on. Because this is a federal initiative, federal, US senators. But local, we'll stand united. Any questions for me? I know it's quick and they're all dirty, but remember one thing, we're in a health pandemic, you're releasing people into our communities. Uh, I'll, I'll just say, as I call, I was on with them, uh, with DHS FEMA and a bunch of them here a couple of weeks ago, they told me, we estimate 5% that are coming across the border will have COVID. Folks, that's above our national average. Something to think about. I'll, I'll leave for now.
We also need to, um, be sure and enforce not to start vigilant, scare everybody, you know, on, uh, on the issue. Because apparently, not as bad as we thought it was gonna be, it's still bad. But we also want to make sure that our communities don't take the law into their hands, and have the property, proper authorities take care of the business. Because what I foresee in some of these areas is some, a lot of vigilant going on.
Ms. Garcia, that's a good point. And, and let me just say this, and we've had a lot of militia groups, the more I speak on national media, the more I get calls from everywhere in the country saying, sheriff, we're coming. No, you're not, say it, please. And it's not to be, I appreciate their patriotism, let us handle it. We have a lot of agents here with the right heart, the right intent. We've got a strong leadership with our police chiefs, our sheriff's office, our Border Patrol, our governor, our state folks. Yeah, we got it. Ms. Garcia, that's a very good point, we'll continue doing that. Uh, there was a question made about, can you shoot them? Remember, let me, let me just say, I get, I get those questions, let me just say, you just can't shoot them. Please, don't take that on as being, if somebody breaks into your home, and you, you, you have to defend yourself or others, you do have the right to protect yourself, especially in your home as a sacred. You just can't blow them away because you, you know, you just can't do that, please. You gotta be able to articulate your personal safety on that. And, uh, but I'll tell you right now, at 2:00 in the morning, somebody breaks your door and they come in.
That was my concern, is my husband gets called out at night, and I'm home alone with two young girls.
Remember, and, and we, we, we want to stop the threat. As a consequence, somebody dies, the longer you articulate legally, uh, you, uh, with your family or somebody else.
So I guess this is kind of works towards Alex, um, I was just thinking, like, I am a healthcare professional, and I deal with a lot of things that other people may not be aware about. So this process, like, the CDC recommends quarantine for 10 days, so if we're not testing people, is that something you guys are, are they quarantined for 10 days?
Uh, they're, they're not.
They're not, okay.
That is, that is not the, um...
I didn't know if that, like, that intake process took that long.
No, no, that, that intake process is...
My, my question for Sheriff Daniels, Mr. Hadfield, I guess, Joe spoke earlier about having people on his property that were trespassing, and he was told that they were not, they couldn't do anything about. What is the case?
Here's how we do that, the sheriff's office, and I'll let the chief, I'll go to the chief on that, is, and I'm a believer of the rural law, obviously, at the very beginning of the years, I'm also a believer of consequences when you break the rural law. And I'll give you an example, we kicked this in about six, seven years ago, working with our county attorney, which is the other key element to this, is over here in the, in this Chirapau, you can ask, they're here after we cocked them, I'll tell you what's going on in your county. But we had some illegals that were actually up on somebody's property, looking through their windows. Neighbor, uh, one of the ranchers caught it, we charged him for attempted burglary and got a conviction. My point on that is, if you're looking through somebody's window, you're going beyond the fact of just walking down onto somebody's property. So I'm a big believer in charging that if, if they're doing that. What we do is, if Border Patrol gets them off the cameras, or our own cameras, and the property owner's involved, we ask the property owners, hey, do you want trespass charges filed? If they say yes, then the state, remember, the, the separation of authority between federal and state and local. But the good thing is, when you collect them together, it's a real positive thing for doing stuff. And that's, they have authorities, I don't, I'm not an immigration officer, folks, I'll tell you. Uh, but the authority I have sometimes complements what they're trying to do too, and vice versa. And we work very close together in that. So we ask the property owner if he wants to charge it, we can. Now, I will say, Gil Griffin's been very instrumental, I try to help her on that, and our trespass laws need to be changed in rural, because it's really tight, sometimes the law doesn't match the offense, which means it was not posted properly, 75 feet, all the different elements of that, and it makes it really tough. I, I'll say, one last thing, and I'll shut up, is Stone Garden, Stone Garden is a huge program for the sheriff's office, one of the best programs that we get, Chief, do you work on Stone Garden? Do you guys work on Stone Garden?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, we, we, we get about a million dollars, about $600,000. It pays 100% of my deputies' ERE, which is employee related expenses, to include mileage, even the retirement pays. It's a great program, it puts me out there to work crimes within communities and within the county parks of our county, where the smuggling, the stash houses, they just took down a stash house in Ceravista, that was transporting infants, or smuggling infants and children. Folks, I'm telling you, open that door, turn that light on, see what happens to this county. We've done amazing work in this county for the last five or six years. That's why I'm standing and defending this so hard on that. But Stone Garden's a program that, please, your elected leaders, I know Peggy's on the call, we need that program. It goes to front of our board of supervisors on Tuesday, and, uh, we need to see that passed, because that's our ranching to help support this team back here. If that gets turned down, make a call, please, that gets turned down, that's gonna hurt us, I'll just tell you right now. It'll hurt our reputation. Mayor, thank you for the time. Council, thank you so much for what you guys are doing.
Sheriff, I wanted to ask you a question, and Gil, this is for you too. How do you guys know where you're gonna have a meeting? How do you know that you're having one here tonight? How do you know?
You call it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I subtract all the local newspapers, but it's, it's getting the calls. If we don't get calls, we don't know what's happening in your community. Thank you for keeping us posted.
Thank you. Judge Ward, you have anything to say tonight? Are you sure? I'd like to thank Judy Lynn from, uh, the emergency management from Cochise County. Thank you for, uh, being here tonight, taking the time out of your day. Do you have anything you want to tell us?
Uh, thank you. I, I got the heads up about this meeting actually from our partners at the hospital. Uh, we're here to answer questions. Um, tonight I'm really taking in information. I met this morning with Neil Brady from, uh, NaCo's Border Patrol Sector. So we're, we're making the rounds and taking all the information in. And we'll be working very closely with the sheriff and local law enforcement, um, to kind of work through this problem. We're attacking it from a couple of ways. So there's the political side of it that you're addressing this evening. My job is to figure out what to do if that doesn't work. So we're working through contingency plans, and working with all of the border counties. In fact, we'll be meeting Monday. Um, and then I spoke with our state emergency manager on the drive here. So we're, we're working our pathway up to advocate on behalf of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, can we, can, sorry, Gil, I didn't talk to you.
Yes, we did not.
I know that Ron Barber wanted to talk to us. When you have to, and I, is Peggy still on the phone?
Yes, I would like to say hello, if that's okay. Just hello to everyone. I guess I should put on my camera too. I really am here. And I, I appreciate you all coming out tonight. Um, I just, this is very important to me. I've lived here my whole life too, so I've seen the, the changes that have been made, and, um, for good and, and bad. And I have to tell you, I'm 100% on the sheriff's side right now, feeling like, um, we've sort of been, um, maybe not treated fairly in this most recent decision. I'm a little worried for our county, but just now, hearing from, the sheriff was wonderful, but hearing from Judy Lynn, you know, that I can guarantee you, our county really cares. And Judy Lynn is a high-class employee, and she knows, for her to be getting that stuff together, um, I didn't even know about it, but I'm very grateful that she's putting together a plan so that we can meet the needs of the county. And, and we're there for you. So just so you know that, reach out to me if you need to. And, um, if you have any questions, I'll look it up for you if I don't know. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Peggy. Steve, are you still on the line? Steve is the president of the board, the hospital board, are you still there, Steve?
She's on the meeting. Yeah, yes, I'm here, mayor.
You have anything to say, tell us, you, you have anything to say?
I don't think so. I think, I think Mo spoke, uh, you know, on the position of the hospital, and, uh, I don't think I have anything to add.
I appreciate it, Steve. You were also contacted by my office, right?
I was, thank you.
We're going to continue that, by the way, we're gonna bother you every chance we get.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Ron Barber, I'm gonna introduce you here. Ron Barber is, uh, a representative of Mark Kelly's office, and Tim and I, and David, I had a 30-minute conversation with him and Mark Kelly, uh, at the city today. We, uh, they called us, and we sat in on a meeting and with them. And Ron, thank you for being so patient on that one. You have the floor, sir.
You're still muted, Gil.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of the council, citizens, Wilcox County, and sheriff, and everybody else who's there tonight. First of all, before I, I share what the senator asked me to, uh, talk to you about, I wanted to say to the sheriff, uh, I'm gonna track that letter down that you sent to the senator and find out what happened. We'll get a response, believe me.
Thank you, Ron.
So, following, let me just say how it started. Uh, that is the call we had today with the mayor, vice mayor, city manager, the senator, and myself. I'm, by the way, his Southern Arizona director, and that means I've got responsibility for Pima, Cochise, Santa Cruz, Yuma County, and so on. So, uh, I'm pleased to be with you tonight, uh, representing the senator. About a week ago, I think it was, your city manager copied us on a letter, or rather, uh, emailed, he sent to mayor and council, raising this issue. And so when I saw that, I immediately, uh, made a recommendation to the senator that we try to set up a meeting, a telephone meeting, I should say, with the mayor and whomever else he wanted in on that meeting. So that's what we did today, this afternoon. Uh, the senator is very concerned, uh, as you are, about the potential for an influx of people into your community, uh, that, uh, you can't support, you don't have the capacity, you don't have the infrastructure to do it. We need to figure out some solutions. And so he said, he tasked me after that call with making some inquiries about what we could do, uh, to help. The first call I made was to the Border Patrol, interim Border Patrol Secretary Chief, John Moadlin, and we spent an hour on the phone today, and I asked him every question I could, uh, and he gave me straightforward answers. And I, I know if the Border Patrol is still in the room, I hope I'm gonna be reflecting back to, uh, you all, what the, what the chief told me, and if it, if it lines up with what you were told, I'm sure it will. First of all, the chief told me that he has asked all of his, uh, local supervisors, uh, seven of them, I believe, uh, to submit a plan of what they plan to do in their area of responsibility. Told me, as he and I were talking on the phone, he received that, and he's gonna be looking at it, uh, tomorrow and beyond, gonna share it with headquarters in DC. Then once it's basically agreed to, he wants to brief every mayor, uh, and council in the, in the, in the, uh, Cochise County and the other counties that are border counties. So that'll, that'll be coming. But that might be a week or so away. So you will get a briefing from him about the plan that was developed by his local supervisors, uh, recommending what to do about the, what, there's likely to be an increase in people coming across the border. Um, he also said that, I asked him, you know, can you say when you, when this catch and release policy will actually be implemented, because you're still trying to figure out how to line everything up? He said he, he thought it would be at least two weeks. Um, don't have a lot of time, but it gives us a little window of time to try to find some solutions here that we might have a little space. Even if it's a week, we'll work with whatever time we have. Um, he said what you have already heard, and that I heard tonight from, uh, the PAC, I believe that's who it was, it was addressing you, about what he expects to happen, uh, particularly in Wilcox, with, I, I told him I was calling half of Wilcox, but also there are other communities, Benson and so on, Douglas, that we need to be concerned about. And, uh, he said that, um, he would be, um, I said, letting you all know the plan, but he also said that there's gonna be some time before this occurs. Now, in terms of trying to get people out of Cochise County, where there may not be any capacity to shelter them, or whatever the, the need is, uh, I also, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute, I've talked to the county administrator in Pima County, the mayor's office, and also the head of one of the largest shelters in Pima County called Casa Leithus. Uh, I've worked with them over the years. In fact, you probably will remember, some of you at least, that I was the district director for Congresswoman Kurt Patrick, and way back in the day, I was your member of Congress before, uh, I moved on. And so I know Cochise County really well. I've been working with, uh, the people of Cochise County since 2007, when I signed on as district director for Congresswoman Giffords, and I've been involved pretty much ever since. So I'm very sensitive to the issues that you face as a small community. Uh, and you do not need to have heavy-duty impact on your community, your hospital, and your resources. That's just not going to be okay. So, in addition to what I shared with you that I got from the chief, uh, he said, and I think, again, this lines up with what you were told earlier, uh, that families, if they show up, uh, and we know there's an issue with, are they a real family, that needs to be sorted out. But if the family shows up, they will be sent away from Cochise County, and into a place, probably Tucson, where they can receive the proper accommodations. The other people who are, uh, coming across, um, will be most likely adults, uh, individual adults, uh, and of course, they'll go through the processing that you've already heard about with the Border Patrol in terms of background checks and, and all the rest, um, to see as much as you can about who they are and what they've been up to, if they have any criminal background and so on. Um, now, if they are, if we have capacity, the chief told me, in any other part of the state, primarily in Pima County, then those people would be, uh, directed there. Now, whether or not they can be transported here by, is a, is a legal question that he's still working his way through. He told me, there's some discretion that he might have based upon what the attorneys have told him about transporting people, but that is an issue. How do you get people from Wilcox to Tucson if there's capacity? And what he told me was, if there is capacity, he will work with ICE to get people to the Tucson or Pima County facility that has capacity. So, I, I think that the, the new chief was, was very forthcoming, very clear, very transparent, didn't hold anything back. He was really a straight shooter, and I appreciated his honesty. We've already been working with him, the senator, and he, uh, met by virtual, uh, meeting about a month ago, and we've been working a lot on issues that the, that the chief brought up to the senator. Senator wants to support the Border Patrol in every way possible, and with the issue that we were most recently focused on is making sure that Border Patrol agents have access, quick access to vaccinations and testing. And we've been trying to find a way to do that with the VA. So, following that call, I made a series of calls, the mayor's office, the county attorney's office, the chair of the board of supervisors of Pima County, and the director of Casa Leithus, the largest shelter we have in Pima County. I was trying to assess what each element is doing, or trying to do, to address this issue before it becomes a huge problem that we all, uh, with. So, uh, it, Casa Leithus right now, from the director's mouth, uh, has capacity, but, you know, they are a specialized faci- are a specialized facility now, primarily dealing with people who have COVID and making sure that they're isolated from the community. But they do have some space, and he wanted, she wanted me to make sure that you knew that if there's space available at Casa de Lita for someone who needs to be placed out of Cochise County, they will, that will be available. But the issue is bigger than Casa de Lita's. And that's why I spoke with the county administrator, the mayor, and the Board of Supervisors Chairperson, Sharon Bronson. We have to find additional capacity, and we've done this in the past. Back in 2019, I was involved, very actively involved, particularly over the Easter weekend, when there was a big surge, and we were trying to figure out where the heck to put all these folks. And we did get a lot of collaboration and support from non-governmental organizations, from church groups and so on, and we were able to deal with that issue. Tomorrow morning, I will be on a virtual meeting with the mayor and council of Tucson and the Board of Supervisors. The purpose of that meeting, which they've convened, is to have this joint meeting between the two major governmental entities, to talk about how do you build capacity for people who need to be sheltered when we have such limited capacity right now. And I can certainly report back to the mayor and council about what happened out of that meeting. Tomorrow afternoon, I believe, or maybe it'll be next Friday, the four county, border counties will meet, as they do every month, attend that meeting, whether it's tomorrow or next Friday. They will be talking about it. The four counties I'm talking about are Yuma County, Santa Cruz, Cochise, and Pima Counties. They meet every month to try to figure out what they can do together as county supervisors to address the issues that are coming to them. And in many cases, the issues that one faces, they all, they all face, because they're all border counties. So those are some activities going on to, one, assess capacity, to build capacity. Then I talked with Teresa Cavendish, the director of the Casa de Lita Shelter, about funding and where it could come from. And she pointed me towards some FEMA funding that is available, not a lot right now, but it is available, that we want to try to access. The senator will be making contact with FEMA to determine what's available and how we get it out to make sure that we have money for placements. The other offer that the chief made, which the senator has, is going to take him up on, is to convene a meeting, a virtual meeting, I guess it'll be, with all of the elements of DHS in Arizona. That includes, obviously, the Office of Field Operations, the custom agents on the ports of entry, Border Patrol, ICE, and others, to have a larger discussion about how to manage this issue collectively, because every one of those entities plays a role. For example, the chief told me that in many cases, and if ICE determines that they're going to have to release somebody, they will not only give them their court date, but they will give them a nice present on their ankle, an ankle bracelet that will be able, they'll be able to track them. Now, I know people can cut things off and all, but it's an attempt to make sure that you can track people no matter where they are. And he also indicated, the chief did, that he's going to be allowing ICE officers, agents to come and set up shop in the Border Patrol stations across Southern Arizona, so that they can have immediate access to the people who are being processed and make determinations about where they should go, whether they should have an ankle bracelet and all of that. So I just want to assure you that Senator Kelly is very, very concerned about this issue. He wants answers from DHS. And to that end, he is going to be calling the secretary, the new secretary for Homeland Security Department, Mr. Mayorkas, tomorrow, to lay out to him what we have heard today from your meeting, our meeting earlier with the mayor and vice mayor and the city manager, and what I heard tonight, which is a whole other set of information that I want to make sure the senator has before he talks to the secretary. We're going to stay on this. Those of you who have worked with me in the past know that when I get a hold of something, I don't let go until we've got some solutions, and that's my commitment to you on behalf of Senator Kelly. He's a bulldog when it comes to getting answers, and he will do everything he can to get not only answers, but solutions. And that's really most of what I wanted to say. I know it's late in the evening, I don't want to keep you any longer, but I'm open to questions if you have them. This will not be my last opportunity, I hope, to talk with you. I would be, welcome the invitation to come, to this way, and be, not only to listen, but to be accountable to you on behalf of this senator. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Mayor? You hear me?
Pardon?
This is the mayor. Can I ask you a question?
Please do, yeah.
One thing that we are interested in, and some people may take this wrong, but we have to, the mayor and the council has to okay any finances we have around here, and that's the taxpayer's money. So I want you, I want you to keep you on the point that you stay in touch with our city manager and our chief of police and our sheriff, that if there's any money that comes available, because we are working harder, if this happens and they come up through here, we're going to use all our resources that the taxpayers are, I'm going to appreciate. So we want to be able to be reimbursed or something to that effect. And I know it may sound petty to some people, but it's not petty.
Not for a second, it's not petty. You know, you got to balance the books, and you got to have money to deal with extraordinary expenses if you incur them, and the senator is totally on top of that. He's been pushing really hard on the administration to get monies to states and cities to deal with the influx of people, not just on people that we're talking about tonight, but also obviously on the expenses related to COVID.
Ron, can I put one more bug in your ear? Yes, I have a friend, a couple of them, good friends, in the Border Patrol, and I want you to know that I went to a graduation one time in El Paso, and we went over to help him pick up his truck, and there was, and I say this, I'm not exaggerating, from Texas, there was thousands of pickups in a parking lot in El Paso, and some of them were two and three years old and had never been dispersed in any Border Patrol. Why can't I have some of those? I'll take the oldest ones, too. They have a few real miles on them.
If I can get them, I'll go out there and drive them over for you. You know, it's a...
I'm going to hold you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a question. You alluded to, at least maybe, maybe I took it wrong, but you alluded to, the senator was going to go to DHS for answers to the problem, and I think the problem isn't at DHS. The problem is in executive orders. I sent an email to your boss, our other senator and our representative, two weeks ago, and asked for answers on this exact subject and several others. I got the same response from all three. There was no response.
So I don't know who's speaking, so I can't really pick up on that. Who was that that just said?
It's Council. Council on Heston.
Well, sir, all I can tell you is, I said I would follow up on the sheriff's letter, I will be following up on yours, too. Were they emails or letters, or both?
They were, they were messages sent through the website, so I assume they were emails.
Okay. That's fair. Yeah. Well, this is not an excuse, I'm just telling you the facts of what was going on. We're in the middle of hiring our staff. Senator's been in office now about a month. We're almost there. We've got about 27 out of 50 staff, that would be both Arizona and D.C., and we're going to be finishing those hires in the next two weeks. It's not an excuse, it's just to explain to you that we are getting literally thousands of letters a week. We have to build capacity inside the office to not only pick up on them, but respond quickly. My goal is always that anyone who works for me in a congressional or now in a senate office, you got to respond to people as quick as you possibly can. So I will check into that, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name, sir, and I can look it up on the council agenda, but maybe you could just spell it for me, and I'll know for sure who you are.
It was Heston, H-E-S-T-A-N-D.
Thank you, Councilmember Heston. I will, I will find out what's going on with that, and I will give you an answer.
Thank you, Ron. Are there any other questions from the council? No questions? Ron, thank you very much for taking the time to be with us tonight. I know it's been a long one.
No worries.
But it's very important to us.
Well, it, the time doesn't matter to me. It's important that we hear what you want to say. And I just want to say something, and expand on what the, what the senator is going to be doing with the new DHS secretary. He's going to be bringing to his, what he heard today, Mr. Mayor, from you and your city manager and your vice mayor. He's not going to be asking them, you know, to do something that he isn't making a demand on, that they have to pay attention to what's happening in local communities. And he's going to be bringing the facts, what he heard from you today, to the secretary, and he will want answers to how they're going to respond to the need you're experiencing anytime soon. And I just had one more thing, which I forgot, I think, and it echoes what was said by the, I believe, the PAC, and that is, that the police chief, I mean, the chief of the sector told me, and I think you've heard this already, that the people who are coming across hopefully will be minimal, if any, impact on Wilcox. We can't say until we see it. But they're heading somewhere. They've come from Central America, or they've come from Mexico, through Mexico. They're heading somewhere, they usually have someone that they're trying to get to. It could be an employer, for that matter, who made a...